Is after six o'clock, so we will call to order the City of Crescent City regular meeting for December 18th, 2017. Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Greenow?
Here.
Councilmember Short?
Here.
Councilmember Follman?
Here.
Pro Tim Kaim?
Here.
Mayor Ensore?
I am here. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Coming back out of closed session, council, do we have anything to report out of closed session?
No action to report this evening.
Thank you. We have our public comment period at this time. The audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or matters that are appearing on the agenda are also accepted. Note however, the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include the placement on a future agenda. All comments need to be directed at the entire council. Any comments that are not at the microphone will be out of order, not part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and your residency, either city or county, for the record, and try to limit your comments to three minutes. We'll extend an extra three minutes for agendized items. Do we have any general public comment tonight? Alright, seeing no general public comment, then we will close public comment and bring it back to the council. We do not have any reports or presentations. We have some items on our consent calendar. The regular council meeting minutes from December 4th. Warrant claims list for November 25th through December 8th. Payroll report for December 9th paid December 15th. Budget to actual for November of 17. New fiduciary fund for OPEB trust and the appropriate resolution. And then the SB 90 cost claim agreement. Do we have any questions from the council regarding the consent? Seeing none, do we have any public comment on our consent calendar tonight? Seeing no public comment, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for action.
Move to approve consent.
Have a motion to approve the consent calendar. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro Tim Kaim?
Yes.
Mayor Ensore?
Yes. Very good. Our first item of business tonight is the swearing in of a new officer, new again, Alex Pearson. So I'll turn that over to our clerk and...
...constitution of the United States?
That I will support and defend the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of California?
And the constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the constitution of the United States?
To the constitution of the United States.
And to the constitution of the state of California?
And to the constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion?
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge?
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter?
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Chief?
Mr. Mayor, good evening, council members, good evening. It gives me a great pleasure to introduce again, with great pleasure and honor, Officer Alex Pearson. Alex?
Hello. It's good to be back. I was able to go to a different agency for a few short years and learn a lot, experience a lot of new things. But at the end of the day, my heart was still always here, and I'm glad to be back, and I'm glad you're having me back. And it's going to be good to work with you again. Thank you.
Great. Welcome back, Alex. Thank you. Alright, continuing with another item that is related to our fine police department. We do have a proclamation of appreciation for the Tamaki Foundation and a plaque that will be presented to the chief tonight and then delivered to them. For those of you who are not aware, Tamaki Foundation has been absolutely instrumental in the development of our canine program. And we would not be where we are today without them. So I want to read the proclamation and then provide the chief an opportunity maybe to speak to this as well. Whereas Mrs. Mary Koch Tamaki created the Tamaki Foundation in the early 1990s in honor of her parents. And whereas the Tamaki Foundation and the Crescent City Police Department first developed a relationship in 2004 when Mrs. Tamaki and former chief of police Doug Black met at a canine training seminar. And whereas this chance encounter has developed into a friendship between two organizations spanning nearly two decades. A friendship which is now spearheaded by chief of police Ivan Mensel. And whereas the Tamaki Foundation has provided the financial support and ongoing encouragement for the CCPD's canine program for all these long years. And whereas the Tamaki Foundation in their efforts have purchased four canine-equipped SUVs and five courageous canines, including Zeus, Apollo, Aries, Django, and Kai. And whereas Mrs. Tamaki's efforts have also provided for all canine training, as well as any special or emergency medical care for both active and retired CCPD canines. And whereas these efforts have provided a colossal public health and safety benefit to the City of Crescent City and her citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Crescent City and the Crescent City Police Department does hereby formally recognize and give our sincerest appreciation and gratitude to Mrs. Mary Koch Tamaki and Tamaki Foundation for their loyalty and support of the canine program which provides for the ongoing safe protection of our community. Given this 18th day of December 2017, Blake Ensore, Mayor. Chief? Absolutely. Absolutely. Blake. Point at that camera. This way? Yeah. Can you get both canines in there? Tell me? Alright. Thanks, guys. We really appreciate it. Chief, I know you get this to the Tamakis and you guys do a good job. We really appreciate you. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. On behalf of the Tamaki Foundation, I know Mrs. Tamaki will be extremely honored and proud to receive this. She has been a great supporter of humane treatment to all animals, especially canines. And she has a special love in her heart for German shepherds. And as you see, some of the two, the animals we've had here have been German shepherds, and they've been magnificent animals and partners and lived on to in good retirement, as Aries has proved. But the Tamaki Foundation is headed by Mrs. Tamaki, who is a wonderful lady and a great humanitarian. And again, she will be honored beyond all reproach with this. So I'd like to thank you and the city for this generous gift, so we will forward to them.
Thank you. Thanks. Alright, we have another proclamation. It's a good night to be able to recognize some of the wonderful partnerships we have. And this is a partnership that we have with Elk Valley Rancheria. What a, what a, it's just a great example of what happens when we as a community think outside the box and look at what we can do together. And the remodeling of the downtown fire hall and that brand-new engine over there is a result of this partnership. So let me share this proclamation, and then Dale Miller's here, and I'll present to him and let him speak to it. Whereas partnerships are the backbone of strong communities, and they create feelings of goodwill and empathy, stretch resources, provide role modeling for positive civic behavior, improve the quality of life for residents. And whereas in 2014, Elk Valley Rancheria approached the City of Crescent City with a proposal to form a partnership which would benefit the citizens of both communities using HUD Indian Community Development Block Grant funding. And whereas the two governments endeavor to submit an application to purchase a much-needed type-one fire engine, as well as to fund a project to modernize the Crescent City Fire Hall, a facility built in the 1950s and used to provide for the public safety of Elk Valley Rancheria and the City of Crescent City residents. And whereas this project would augment a project already funded by FEMA to seismically retrofit the facility, allowing for maximum use of the building. Whereas in February of 2016, the project was awarded with $201,866 in matching funds provided by the City of Crescent City and $605,000 provided through the hard work of Elk Valley Rancheria and the ICDBG grant. And whereas a notice of completion for the Crescent City Fire Hall Modernization Project was filed in April 2017, and the ownership of a type-one fire engine was transferred to the City of Crescent City in November of 2017. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council and staff of the City of Crescent City, on behalf of our citizens, wish to provide our sincerest appreciation and gratitude to the Elk Valley Rancheria Tribal Council and staff for their dedication to the public health and safety of both of our communities. In doing so, you have brought us all closer together, and it is our hope and aspiration that this partnership continues for generations to come. Given this 18th day of December 2017, Blake Ensore, Mayor. Dale? Thank you. I can't say thank you enough for the partnership that the tribe has presented to us this opportunity. Really like you to speak thankful. Please do your...
I'd like to thank you also, the partnership that we've had. This just wasn't a short time period. It took a few years to get done. And I'd first like to introduce Krista Stewart, who's here with me. She's our Director of Grants, and she worked with your staffs. And finally, we got this thing done, and it's been a real accomplishment that makes us feel good. I don't know how many of you have been out to our community center, but if you read our mission statement, one of the things that we originally did was to make sure that our relationships with the community was strong, and we still are committed to that. So thank you a lot, and especially thank you to Eric Weir and Chief Wakefield for all the work that they've done on this, taken a lot of work. And we're happy to be able to do it. Hopefully, we can do some other things.
Amen. Thank you. Alright. Alright, we'll move on in our agenda then. We do not have any public hearings. We will adjourn to the Housing Authority of a couple items on consent that we need to deal with. All the members of the Housing Authority are present, so we'll dispense a rule call. On the consent calendar, we have the Housing Authority regular minutes for November 20th and the warrant claims list for November 11th through December 8th. So do I have any public comment on the Housing Authority consent calendar? Alright, seeing no, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Board member Short?
Yes.
Board member Follman?
Yes.
Board member Greenow?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kaim?
Yes.
Chair Ensore?
Yes. Very good. We do have one business item. It's a public hearing for the project-based voucher development approval. Megan, come and talk to us about this exciting opportunity.
Thank you. It is an exciting opportunity. We're going to do kind of a three-part presentation here. The public hearing is for the Housing Authority's recommendation to award 26 project-based vouchers to Danco Communities Harbor Point Apartments Project. So I'm going to speak about the project-based voucher component. And then we have Eric Taylor here, who's going to talk about the city's role in the process and give a little bit of the history and the background. And then we have Chris Dart here from Danco, who can address any questions you may have about the company or the project. So we've been talking for quite some time about project-based vouchers as a part of our long-term program expansion goals. And to that end, we issued an RFP in October, seeking new development proposals for affordable housing, trying to partner that with 30, up to 30 project-based vouchers. And we did receive one proposal, and it is from the one that is before you tonight, Danco's Harbor Point Apartments. The complex would be located in downtown Crescent City. It's a 27-unit complex with one unit for the manager, so they are requesting 26 project-based vouchers to be used within this complex. It would be exclusively for seniors. And so basically, how it would work is the developer would build this new development, affordable housing complex, and the Housing Authority would fill it with our program participants who meet the criteria. So there's no additional application for funding required. The 26 units, the 26 project-based vouchers, would come out of our already allocated 608 families per month. That 608 includes the 18 VASH vouchers. It would be as if, okay, we've got 608 families, 26 of them are living over here, and they are committed to being used within this complex for an initial term of 20 years. It's extendable at the conclusion of that initial term for a second 20 years. So we have 23% of our program base that is currently being assisted is senior households. We have 52 applicants on the waiting list as of today that are seniors. So we could, just with our existing waiting list, we could fill this complex twice over. And seniors have a few more barriers in finding housing than other applicants. They're typically looking for a specific type of unit. They want an apartment. They want a place where it's low maintenance for them. If there's a problem, they can pick up the phone and call. Somebody from onsite is there right away to address their needs. They want to be around other seniors. They want to be in a place that is centrally located, where they can easily access parks, beaches, libraries, the pool, all of that. So this project has all of those things. And it would be a significant advantage for the Housing Authority to be able to have 26 units for the exclusive use of our participants. That's huge. And this is just a very good way for us to bring more affordable housing opportunity into our community. So our hope is that, as we, this is kind of our first foray into it, but if we are successful with this, then this is a model we can continue with, and we can continue to expand housing opportunities for our community. Are there questions about the project-based part that you, or should I pass it over to Eric? I've been talking about it for a while, so... Okay, so I'm going to pass it over to Eric then.
Good evening. I'll go through this pretty quickly. I just want to, going to go through the history of this project. So as you know, this is for the Harbor Point Apartments Project for Danco Communities. We've been working on this for a couple of years now, so I'm just going to give a brief history because we have quite a few new council members who weren't around initially when this came forward. And touch on why these project-based vouchers are so important on leveraging these projects. And we'll talk a little about tax credits. And as Megan already mentioned, Chris Dart, President of Danco Communities, is here as well. Just want to follow up some other projections. Again, according to a recent report, 2014 report, and this is from the Census Bureau. From 2012 to 2050, the United States will experience considerable growth in older population, and it is significant. By 2050, the population age 65 and over is projected to be 83.7 million, which is about double of the current estimate of about 43 million. 33 years isn't a long time. Especially when you get to be my age, you realize how that's not a long time. It goes by fast. So we really need to start preparing now and looking at these types of projects and moving them forward. By 2030, more than 20% of U.S. residents are projected to be age 65 and older. And as you know, seniors are really about age 62 or over, and they will actually be eligible for this apartment complex. Other important things to touch on are housing element, which is part of our general plan. So you know, every year, the state, each cycle, I should say, is about every five years, the California Department of Housing and Community Development calculates these communities' fair share of housing. It's based on a number of different projections. For us, this cycle, we were projected to have 25 units, or 75 units, sorry, that's our fair share. And then we have obviously several housing elements and state laws that require us to develop low-income housing. So it's kind of nice to see this project moving forward. Project site, 2011, and this is why these project-based vouchers are very important for us right now. 2011, the city used what we had in RDA funding for housing set-asides. It was almost a million dollars. We used about $55,000 of that to purchase the former El Patio motel site. Then around 2012, RDA was eliminated. The city thereby lost about a million dollars in funding that we could leverage for these types of projects. And that's why it became very difficult for all communities throughout California to move these types of projects forward. But through the process, we were working with Danco to get this project moving forward. The city donated the structures when we obtained the El Patio motel project for fire training burn. And then 2014, the city entered into a DDA with Danco. I'll touch on that a little farther. So this is what the El Patio motel looked like when we acquired the property. Again, this is the fire training burn. This actually was a great experience. I believe we had firefighters from multiple states even involved in this. It went on for about three days. This is what the El Patio looked like for a short period of time. And this is what it looks like today. It's about six tenths of an acre. It's a fairly decent-sized lot. It's about a little dog bone-shaped lot there. It goes around to the back as well, right in the heart of downtown Crescent City. Danco proposed plan, as Megan already mentioned, is going to be a 27-unit, three-story apartment complex, roughly 23,000 square feet in size, not to exceed 40 feet in height. We'll have a 29-stall parking lot, a mix of one- and two-bedroom apartments, but majority of them will be one-bedroom apartments, which are perfect for seniors. And then Danco has entered an agreement to purchase land from the city. It was last estimated at about $200,000. It also has about $80,000 in connection fees because it was formerly a hotel, so they had some single-family equivalents there. The agreement is that they'll be paying that back over 55 years at 3% interest if this project moves forward. So just show you some quick renderings here. That's the project site, the neighborhood. So here's kind of a site layout. You see, here's where the proposed structure will be and the parking area. Again, here's the layout. Again, the first floor, managers, we'll have a managers unit, office, community room, fitness room, laundry facility, and six apartments. The second and third floors will each have 10 apartments. It will be a mix of one and two bedrooms. Each floor will have a common laundry, a common sitting area, and second floor and deck on third floor. So here's architectural rendering. It's a nice project. Another thing I'll note here, 'cause the solar panels, it'll also be on the building. Project cost and financing. So this is where it all comes together. Total project cost is about $8 million. That's everything. Acquiring the property, all the site improvements, all the way up to construction of the building. And we talked different forms of financing on this project. Again, the land value, tax credits, loan, hard money loan, solar tax credits, and of course, the project-based vouchers if we can get this move forward. There's two types of tax credits. There's 4% and 9%. This is a federal program, but is passed down to the states, so the state Housing Finance Authority actually gives out the allocations for the tax credits. And allocation seat state is based on population. So as you can imagine, California does get a pretty decent share of these tax credits. Again, you have the two types, the 4% and the 9%. 9% are primarily for new construction, so those are the ones that Danko will be going after. And tax credits are an incentive for development. So if you look at it from a developer's point of view, if you're going to make money, you're gonna develop market-rate apartments, 'cause you can charge what you want for them. So there was really no incentive to really get into these low-income projects. So that's where these tax credits come into play. They're an incentive for developers to invest in these projects to get them built. What do the developers get in return, or the investors? So kinda how the tax credits work, it's a 9% tax credit. They can claim it for 10 years. So theoretically, they're claiming 10% per year on the tax credits. It doesn't really quite work out to that. I believe the formula, it really comes up to about 70% over the 10 years. But what it does is it allows developers, they'll come in, or investors will purchase a large share of the partnership, so it's typically 99.9%, which is what you'll see in this project. In return, again, they get to claim those tax credits. So more ownership in the project means they can claim more of those tax credits later on. Any questions on the tax credits? I'm not an expert by any means. It's very long. There are a lot of different formulas. There's formulas for how these investors actually make their money. They buy into these projects at a little lower rate, then they get a higher return on the tax credits. That's where their profit comes in. And again, obviously, the benefit is to get the development of these low-income projects. And you'll see the lion's share of the funding for this project is definitely gonna come. So as you see, the permanent debt, the 1.5 million, that's actually the project-based vouchers, so that's why these are very important. Tax credits would come in at about $6 million on the funding on this project. And then you see some other sources, such as the land, about 280,000, solar tax credits, 97, and hard money loan developer note of about $7,000. Tax credits are important. As you can see, they equal about $1.5 million in leveraging. So when they go for these applications, so all these, it's competitive, highly competitive process. So with the demise of the RDA funding, we have to seek other ways of funding these projects. So you have what's kinda called your soft costs and your hard costs. More the soft costs you have upfront, the better chance you have on your application. Your soft costs are gonna be like your engineering, your architectural, land purchase, those types of expensive. Hard costs, obviously, are gonna be the cost of constructing the project. So when they go to rank and rate these applications, everybody's probably coming in at 100%. So then when you get, you get what I call these tiebreakers, so then they'll look at those soft costs, and you get points based on how much funding you have upfront. So if you look at the cost of this project for what they have upfront, Danko believes they have a very good chance of getting funded this time around. They have applied in the past. We were unsuccessful. But obviously, the addition of the 1.5 million is gonna be a huge boost for this project. Again, there's the recommendations, so I don't wanna take away. This is about the project-based vouchers and approving them. And then, of course, Chris Dart is here to answer any questions that you have of him. Do you have any questions for me about the project or the process or history of the project? Okay, great. Thank you.
I have one.
Okay.
I'm just wondering what the timeline is for when they can start.
So they will apply again in March. Obviously, there'll be a period of time where they're waiting. One of the things we required, and Megan had in her RFP, was that the project would be ready within one year. So they're looking at that, from the date of funding to about one year to start a construction. So it is, I guess I didn't mention that they have already come forward through this process. They've gone to the planning commission. Obviously, we've gone to the council. They have all of their entitlements, so it'd be, you'd call a shovel-ready project. As long as, the only thing we're waiting on now is to get the financing in place, and we'll be ready to move forward. Okay. Thank you. And I'll let Mr. Dart come up and explain a little bit about Danko, 'cause they do have a lot of experience. I believe they've developed about 16 of these projects in the past. The reason why we like Danko is because they're out of Humboldt County, so they're fairly close. And the other big benefit is that they manage their own properties after they construct them. They don't turn that over to a third-party management company. They do all of that in-house, which is important, too, to make sure when these projects are built that they're maintained properly.
Good evening. Chris Dart, President of Danko Communities, Marquada. I mean, Eric did such a good job. I don't know what's left to say here, but Danko, we've been in business for 30 years, and we've done a number of these projects. We've done about 800 units placed in service now, low-income housing, mostly in Humboldt County, a little bit out in Mendocino, even as far as Santa Clara County, we have one going now. As Eric said, these project-based vouchers really are the leverage that's gonna help us succeed with the tax credits. And really, what they're looking, the state is looking for is local participation. And the more local participation you have in dollars, the higher score you have. It's a ratio between your total development cost and your local contribution. That is the tiebreaker, as he mentioned. So that's significant in this project to make it happen. We have applied, I think, three times now and haven't been successful because that leverage wasn't high enough. With the land value being at 200,000, the fees, that total 280,000, with an $8 million project, wasn't enough to tip the scale and produce a win, if you will. So this should do it. We've got two rounds in 2018 here. First round is in February 28th, and the second round is on, I think it's June, right around the beginning of June. And then, once we're successful with the tax credits, we have 180 days to close. I know the project-based vouchers have a one-year performance as well. So about 12 months after we're, we're the credits, and we should be able to, when I say "close", it means close on all the financing, the construction loans, and then start construction on the project. We have a good design team onboard for this project. We do have to also produce NEPA for the, for the project-based vouchers to be valid. We have to go through NEPA, and so we have not done that, so that's another environmental review process that we'll have to go through. So I'm here to answer any questions you have.
So when the, with the initial application, what's the timeline of when you, when you would receive notification, whether or not you got accepted this time?
Yeah, so the official timeline is right around the beginning of June, end of May. But I will tell you that we know within three days, because they publish all the scores. And there's companies out there that have, know how to do the math and figure out how much money they have available and what the scores are, and come up with reasonable guesses on who's gonna win. So we should know and all communicate with Eric once the scores are out, if it looks like we're in a position to win. But the official award letter is somewhere around June for a February 28th application.
Do we have any, so then I'm assuming then after that, the second round being in June. Is there, Chris, is there anything left that we can do to augment that leverage? Let's, let's say it's just razor-thin, but just miss it again in that February application. Do we have any areas yet that we can, from a council standpoint, that we can help in this leverage?
I mean, financial participation is really it. What we are doing is, because we appraised the property back in, we've appraised it several times, and it's come up at the 280,000. It sounds backwards, but we would like the value to be higher, because it counts as local contribution. So we're going to appraise it again, 'cause the marketplace has changed in the last couple of years. And we're hoping that we can get some higher comps and get the value of the land up, which will count even more for the local contribution.
All right. Anybody else have any questions?
How does someone participate in this? You were saying local participation?
Well, local participation meaning local dollars.
Okay.
It really, the matrix is...
Looking for investors?
No, it's government financing. It's local government financing. It can't be a private person just writing a check. It's gotta come from a government entity. And it's, it comes in the form of a grant or a loan, a residual receipt loan, which is what we're, are doing here. But that's what they mean by local participation.
Thank you.
How long do you think the NEPA review will take?
Well, I don't anticipate any issues on the site, so it should go fairly quick. I think the Housing Authority would be the lead agency. We would do all the work. We'd hire the consultants to do the work. We've done it before. I would think we could get it done in a month. We're gonna start working on it right away, assuming that you all vote yes.
Yeah. All right. Anybody else? All right.
Thank you.
Chris, appreciate it. All right. Megan, do you have anything else that you wanna wrap this up with?
I just wanted to echo your sentiments, opening up, saying this is very exciting. It is very exciting. This is a great opportunity for all of us.
And I'm excited. You're excited. 'Cause sometimes it is, it is a challenge to perceive something from a, from a different vantage point that is different than what we do, and this is obviously one of those cases where thinking about this from a different vantage point actually benefits everybody. So, okay, so the, the action, I guess, that we are looking at will be to award these vouchers to Danko. Do we have any public comment tonight regarding this action? Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the council then for your recommendation regarding the awarding of the 26 project-based vouchers to Danko.
Mr. Chairman, I move we conditionally award 26 project-based vouchers to Danko Communities pending completion of a NEPA review.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Board member Greenow?
Yes.
Board member Short?
Yes.
Board member Falman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Keim?
Yes.
Chair and score.
Yes. All right, very good. Thank you, Megan, Chris. Thank you, Eric. We're looking forward to this, this being just the leverage we need. Good job. All right. We have no other items for the Housing Authority. We will adjourn from the Housing Authority. We do not have any reason to go to the successor agency, so we'll reconvene as the city council and going on. We have no continuing business, but we do have one item of new business, revised ordinance requiring street improvements. Mr. Young?
Presently, we, under Section 1204030 of the municipal code, we require certain street improvements whenever a building is, and I quote, erected, constructed, modified, added to, or moved, except when the value of the work is less than 25% of the value of the improvements of the existing property. This has, on occasion, discouraged routine home improvements and can, in the sense that, for example, a home that was assessed a number of years ago in which a person wishes to remodel their, say, kitchen and bathroom, which is not unheard of, can easily break over the 25%. And if they do not have curbs, gutters, and sidewalks that comply with city standards, they would be required to, if need be, remove the ones that are there, if there are some, and reinstall them meeting the city standards. And while the city is intended to encourage the curbs, gutters, and sidewalks over the years, we also want to encourage people to maintain their buildings, otherwise our code enforcement people are looking for them, because we've had a number of ones that haven't been maintained. We had one example recently. It was probably sort of a worst-case example. Somebody wished to purchase a corner lot, and they wanted to re-riff and re-site it, and it would have pushed it over the 25%, and it had no curbs, or it had the curbs and gutters, but no sidewalks. And what this does is clarifies a few points in that section and exempts those in which they are doing basically remodeled work and the like. It requires the curb, gutter, and sidewalk to be put in for any new construction. If you have a vacant lot, building a home, or a business, you will have to install them. But if you're doing a remodel and not expanding, and even if you are expanding but not expanding beyond the 25% rule, then you would not be required to make these, make these improvements. And the other thing that it does is it limits the amount of improvements required, because some cases, the improvements would have maybe exceeded the cost of the work being done if the value of the home, as per the successor's role, was low enough. But it would limit it to 25% of whatever you're doing. So, for example, if you were doing a project that was gonna cost, say, $20,000, and that happened to break you over the 25%, you would be limited to additional $5,000 worth of street improvement work, if that took you over the 25%. That's basically what it does. As the ordinance has been, we've had to make some judgments. I've had to make some judgments on how to apply it. A couple of things that brought this up were the improvements around the bank recently, the motel. Six questioned, you know, there was a, really a code enforcement program, but the improvements were over 25% of the value. Do they have to put all the new curbs and gutters and sidewalks in when we're trying to rehabilitate a piece of property? Didn't seem to make sense. And so this would eliminate that. So for the person wanting to improve their home, do major maintenance that might push them over, they would not be burdened with this. But on the other hand, any new construct, any major improvement, somebody, for example, let's say, putting a second story on a home. If improvements were needed to the streets, then they would still be required to do it. So that's basically what this ordinance revision would do. And today's action, tonight's action would be to, if the council approves of this, would be to introduce the ordinance, and it would be then at your next meeting for adoption. So, any questions?
Okay, we have any questions for Mr. Young? Okay, seeing questions. We have any public comment regarding the introduction of Ordinance 801? Come up here, please. Please tell us your name, and then you go ahead and ask your question or comment.
Sure. My name is Justin Hamner, and I am a resident of Crescent City. Have been for like eight years. Anyways, my question is really like a request that I have. And I don't know if this is within your budget, but my question is about Front Street. It's very bad. There's a lot of potholes. I drive down it a lot. So how would we build it in, build in the budget to repave Front Street to, you know, clear the potholes?
I will just say that we are in the process of this next round of Community Block Development Grant, a storm drain project that will, in doing that, will address about half of Front Street as far as it being rebuilt. It doesn't get the whole thing done, and we haven't secured that grant funding yet. But the hope is, is that we'll get part of that done in the next year and a half to two years, and then we will keep working on the others. So it is something we're looking at, but it's just, it's a very big project.
Yeah.
We're gonna stay on top of it, so we appreciate your concern.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, any other public comment? All right, we'll close public comment then. We'll bring it back to the council. Our action would be to waive full reading, read by title only, Ordinance 801. Take action?
I move that we adopt Ordinance Number 801.
We're not gonna, I'm sorry, we're not gonna adopt. We're actually just introducing it, so we're waiving the full reading and introducing Ordinance 801. Go ahead.
I just have a comment, possibly, if I could interrupt Mr. Greenow. If, we have identified that this is... If, we have identified that this is hindering our folks in the city from making improvements. You know, we've identified that, that placing this into the, into the, into the code was possibly a mistake, and, and has been counterproductive. I'm wondering if we're going far enough. I, I was totally in favor of, of seeing the street improvements when we have new constructions, but I still have reservations about whether we should be requiring, requiring this just when somebody's trying to improve their home. I don't know if any of the, the rest of the council has any similar sentiments or, or opinions on this.
I think that the, the one thing that, that at least is somewhat of a protection element in that is that whatever their cost would be for improvement would not exceed 25% of their, of their project. So if you put a $10,000 roof on, on your house, you're not gonna, in other words, if you start looking at that at 25%, at $2,500, ultimately, you're not gonna do much for $2,500, so they're not gonna be required to do that, because unless we wanted to come up with whatever the difference from the city's standpoint, we're not gonna ask them to do something that, that there's not sufficient funding that we have to do that. So, but I, I understand what you're saying, but that's part of the reason of, of having the 25% cap on top of whatever their project is.
If I could comment, Mr. Mayor, the particular example that you used wouldn't trigger it if the roof cost $200,000, because as long as it's not making any expansion, where it would kick in is if there was new construction that expanded the habitable floor area, or otherwise made improvements to home, but things such as not increasing the size of the home whatsoever. For example, a person could put a new roof on, put new siding, put new windows, remodel their kitchen, remodel their bathroom, and they might be putting as much investment into the home as they paid for it, and probably more in some cases. That would not trigger, trigger it, because that would not be any expansion in use. On the other hand, somebody coming along with, for example, a thousand-square-foot Barisa home, adding a second story and, and kicking it out to the back to where it suddenly became 2,500 square feet, that would kick in pretty clearly. But then, they would be limited to the 25% of whatever their cost is for improvements, if there were improvements necessary, necessary on the street, which they fronted. So.
Okay, good. Is that, is that helpful?
I, I understand the, the thought process. I, I'm just thinking about probably a large percentage of the population in the city is probably not in the higher-income bracket, and they, if someone were to undertake trying to expand their home a bit, it would probably be a, a big burden for us to add to that. I just have reservations.
So, so you mean like, some of the carports with then adding like a, a room would trigger that? You mentioned the Barisa, Mike, you mentioned the Barisa homes, like if there was a carport and they pushed the wall out and added, say, a, a fourth bedroom or something, then that would trigger something in the?
What that would trigger, let's assume somebody has a carport or a garage and converts it into living space. That would at least trigger that they have now expanded. Now, the next question would be, is that expansion more than 25% of the value of the improvements on the property? If it wasn't, then there would still be no improvements required. If it was more than 25%, the next question would be, are there any improvements necessary? If they happen to have complete curb, gutter, and sidewalk in front of it, there would be no improvements necessary, because they're there.
So is, Councilman Short, is, is your thought that, that, that the only, the only provision for these improvements would just be for new construction, that, that existing construction would have any requirements placed upon them? Is that what you're thinking?
Yes.
Is that, Mike, is that something that, that you considered from a staff standpoint of removing all requirements on behalf of, of remodeling and, as opposed to new construction?
Yes, and it was sort of a balance between one, wanting to not discourage maintenance of buildings, or normal, routine, even major maintenance, so we don't want to discourage that in any way, shape, or form, but there's also always been, at least in the past, a desire on the part of the city to be able to encourage and to get complete, uh, street built out with complete curbs, gutters, and sidewalks. In most cases, what it involves is sidewalks, but there may be a rare case or two around town where the curb and gutter are in. So it was a balance between the two. We didn't want to lose the opportunity, if there's a bigger project, you know, somebody spending a significant amount of money on expansion, to get some additional sidewalks put in if they aren't already there, but on the other hand, not to discourage it. So, I think when it's gonna kick in are those, rather than the person who has very limited financial resources, would be the person who's probably a little better off and is able to make a major expansion to a home, you know, or a property, then may have to put in some public improvements on top of it. So, I doubt that it would be the person with the relatively, for a couple reasons. Once that, one is that home would probably have a lower value, so there would be a larger, you know, and, and more than likely, they would be not looking at expansion, but unless they have the financial resources to do it. But anyway, yes, we did. It's about trying to make a balance between the two. It's something you have to, in your infinite wisdom, figure out.
Great. All right, any other questions, comments, on behalf of the council? Okay, so if, if we don't, we can take another stab at this, Mr. Greenow, if you want to, to waive full reading and read by title only, Ordinance 801, which we'll then come back at our next meeting for adoption.
So the action is just?
I can, I can. I can make this motion to introduce the ordinance of the City Council of Crescent City amending Sections 12.04.030, improvements required of Chapter 12.04. Curbs, gutters, and sidewalks of Title 12 Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places of the Crescent City Municipal Code with one modification. That is on page two of the ordinance, Section B, where it says, "Will be limited 25% of the cost of the work to erect, construct, add to, or move the dwelling or building." I move that we modify that to strike "add to."
I'll second that.
I can go over that again if you guys need me to.
And, and, and I understand what you have, the...
It would modify to say, "Will be limited 25% of the cost of the work to erect, construct, or move the dwelling or building."
Okay, I'm not, I'm not sure how that, my, my concern is, is that it's going to leave, what it's going to end up being is, is this going to be a, a thing where somebody's going to have to make a judgment call of what that, what that's meant to say, because I'm not sure, the only way that that would be in the case would be a new construction, because it would be, it wouldn't be an add-on, it would be a new construction, maybe on the same lot. Is that your?
Or moving the building, yes.
So there, excuse me, Mayor, there's a couple other areas in the ordinance that mentions addition to or added to. For instance, Paragraph A, any person arranging for the erection, construction, addition to, or the moving of any dwelling or building must provide for the construction of curbs, gutters, and sidewalks in accordance with city specifications.
Thank you, Ms. Rice, I missed that.
Don't know if there's any others that, that would apply to this.
Fourth line of that, Section A, there's added to at the end of that line. In doing so, you would probably want to probably need to strike Number Two, or modify it, because it talks about increase of habitable floor area.
I think that my, my thinking is, is that, that if, if we're going to be making substantive changes to the, to the ordinance, we may want to send this back to staff. If the direction of the council, if there's a, if there is consensus of the council that, that we want to remove that condition, we may want to send this back to, so that we don't approve something and find out, well, we should've taken that line out as, as well. So.
I would suggest the same, the council wants it as it is, that's fine. If you want to make these modifications, that you refer back to staff, and we would modify it, if that's the decision of the entire council, modify it for reintroduction next, next week.
I think I, I might suggest, Councilman Short, it would be to redraw.
I will withdraw my motion then, and move that we send it back to staff to remove the, the language that talks about anything other than new construction or moving of a building.
Okay, so I have a motion that, that we send Ordinance 801 back to staff, removing all actions regarding anything other than new construction or the moving of a building. So in other words, no, no expansion component in that. Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Do you have any public comment on this motion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Pro Tim Keim?
Yeah.
Mayor Enscore?
No. All right, that passes four to one. We'll send it back to staff, for staff to work on and bring back to the council on our next meeting. All right.
Mayor?
Yes.
A point of order, I guess, on the agenda. I just noticed that the Housing Authority actually has a resolution.
Oh.
Necessary, they need to submit, and I think they, we didn't include adoption of the resolution.
Okay, thank you, council, I appreciate that. So, i- if, if you would go back, it's, it's on page 52 in your agenda packet, council, or now Housing Authority Board. And so, we're going to reconvene as the Housing Authority Board to make sure that we take care of this. We have a resolution HA 2017-03. Could I have a motion to approve that resolution?
Move to approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All right, please pull the vote.
Board Member Greenow?
Yes.
Board Member Follman?
Yes.
Board Member Short?
Yes.
Vice Chair Keim?
Yes.
Chair Enscore?
Yes, thank you, council, I appreciate that. We will adjourn from the Housing Authority and reconvene as the city council again. Legislative matters, anyone have anything they want to bring up? Okay, city manager, report?
Couple things. You're well aware, our city clerk has tendered resignation. Tomorrow will be her last day. I think we need to commend her for the fine job she's done, by at least the time I've been here. I'm very appreciative of all the help that she provided in the office, and I'm sure she's been a real asset to the community, the times, city, for the time she's been here. And also, on the good side of that, I have talked to a former city clerk, Robin Patch. She and Kimmy got together today, who should have a fairly smooth transition, because this is one of the required positions within the city. And it's a temporary employment, appointment, a part-time, to cover the basic city clerk functions of the city, and so that'll be hopefully smoothly moved from Kimmy to Robin for the time being until a final decision and selection of a made of a permanent city clerk. On another note, just a couple of our projects. Our coastal access project is nearing completion. The curbs and gutters are in for the, for the parking lot now, and hopefully the gravel will be put down this week. And while a metal handrail has yet to be put on, that will be, and the city staff will be putting on, it's nearing completion. The elevated tank project is also getting nearing completion. Matter of fact, some of the testing of the, of the new pressure-reducing valves and stuff probably will begin tomorrow morning, early, while the manufacturer's representatives into this here in town, but, but that'll take another month or so before it's completed. But those two projects are just about wrapped up. Dog park, same thing, it's just the parking lot is, is nearing completion on that, so some of that you're probably aware of. Maybe less so the elevated tank is sort of hidden out there in the woods, but that project is just about wrapped up too.
Okay. All right, we have one other item on our agenda, and that's the mayoral appointments, boards, commissions, committees. You have the, the list in your packet, and so if there's any, any final thoughts, concerns, desires to change, adjust, this would be your shot at that, otherwise we will, we will vote on it as it is.
Sir, just one little point, Crescent City Port Search and Rescue, earlier this year, I asked to be taken off of that because of my schedule, could not make the appointments. My schedule has since changed.
That's my fault.
So I can be placed back on that if you, if you like.
I, I missed that one when I sent it to, to Kimmy, I apologize. That's my fault. So, if you would make note of that, Kimmy, to put Darren back as the primary on that. I thought I'd found him all, but missed one. All right, anything else? Final shot. Anybody wanna, wanna make a big trade here? Airport for a bus? Oh, you're on both, never mind. I don't know. Trash for a bus? Nothing. Okay, ma'am? Just saying. We, we, we like to work together and share the load, right?
Yeah.
You guys are too much. Okay.
I see your, your name on quite a few of those.
It is interesting, isn't it?
If, if, if you'd like me to take Laffco from you, I don't know if you would appreciate a lighter workload, or if that's something you...
No, I, I appreciate the offer, but I, I will probably stay with Laffco. One of the things that, that I was going to report out is that, that I have been asked to serve on an ad hoc committee with Cal Laffco in addressing their state budgetary struggles, and so I really probably need to stay with that, since I'm working with it on a state level now, so, but thank you. All right, then if we don't have any adjustments, other than the one correction of the mistake that I made, do I have a motion that we approve the mayoral appointments as printed?
Move to approve as printed.
Okay, we have a motion to approve as printed. Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
All right. Why don't you pull the vote? It's your last shot at it. How about that?
Councilmember Foman?
What am I supposed to say again? Yes, Kimmy.
Councilmember Short?
Yes, Kimmy.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes, Kimmy.
Pro Tim Kime?
Yes, Kimmy.
And Mayor Ensore?
Yes, Kimmy.
Thanks, Council.
All right. Thank you. All right. So, my guess is, is that the, that even the public at home is not that excited about what you did the last two weeks. So, instead of reporting out of what you did the last two weeks, I'll give you each a minute and a half to, to share your appreciation to, to, to Kimmy as, for the service she's given to our community, and, and then we will adjourn. How about that? You're first, Mr. Foman.
I can do that.
We're gonna go by, no, I guess I can't say that, Kimmy. We're gonna start there. That was almost a mistake. Go ahead.
I mean...
Say something profound.
I'm, I'm working on it.
Okay. Impromptu.
Well, so I'm a politician. So, Kimmy started at the city with the job of being the city clerk, and I think what's really been great about Kimmy is that she said to herself that she's not just going to be the city clerk, she's gonna do everything else that the city isn't currently doing. And for the past few years, she's really stepped up. She's made that job and her position there a lot more than what it needed to be, and I appreciate you for that, Kimmy. It's gonna be hard to fill your shoes.
Mr. Green?
Kimmy, I want, I want to thank you so much for all of your hard work over these last few months, and it's been really awesome to work with you and to have you on with the city. We wish you the best at your new job, and we know that you'll do well at whatever you choose to do. Thank you.
Mr. Kime?
Well, I just would like to say, you are a wonderful addition to the city, and we will miss you tremendously. You're a great travel partner. Hopefully, we get to go back to Japan together sometime. I'm so excited for you and your endeavors, truly.
Mr. Short?
Kimmy, it's remarkable how, how engaged in the community that you are, and how endearingly you're spoken about in all those circles that, that we are acquainted with. Just wanted to say that you're gonna be missed, and I'm glad you're not going far.
Kimmy, I've told you this before, one of your greatest traits, and one that I know will serve you well wherever you go, is that, that you are an aspirational person. You aspire to be something beyond what you currently are. I think that that is something that is sorely lacking in our world today. So many people are just satisfied with what they have. And we need people, especially young people, who are willing to strive for something more. And I, and I really respect you for that. You have been a fantastic colleague, and a great friend, and, and I wish the very best for you. And I know that our loss is the Talladega Nation's gain, but beyond that, it's a win for our community, because you will continue to serve here, in an area I know you, you love. And so, I wish you and Cody very best, and thank you very much. And you can have a final word if, if you'd like, and then we'll adjourn.
You guys are gonna make me cry.
We try.
I can't thank everyone at the city enough for everything, all of the friendships I've had, my fantastic colleagues, and the department directors that I've gotten to work so close with. I have learned, I can't even, you know, quantify how much I've been able to learn from each and every single person here. And, you know, we live in an extremely special community, and I think that everybody here knows that and appreciates that, and I wouldn't aspire to do the things that I aspire to do if I didn't love this place so much. So, thanks, everyone, for giving me the opportunities that I've had, and I definitely plan to stick around and continue to do whatever I can do to help this place grow. So, thank you.
All right. Very good. We're going to adjourn. I think that we have, we've got to get some clarity on something, Council, so we need to go back into closed session just briefly, please. So, but we will, we will adjourn to our next meeting, which will not be a regular scheduled meeting. It will be a special meeting of the City of Crescent City on January 8th. Okay? January 8th is our next council meeting. We may have a special meeting that will be noticed before that. That's what we need to get clarity on before we leave tonight. So, but we are adjourned. We do not expect that there will be anything to report out of closed session.